Okay, great. I'm going to call to order the September meeting of the Escondido Library Board of Trustees. Do we have any oral communications, Zach?
None.
Great. Would anyone like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the last meeting?
So move.
Um, I had a question about
Oh.
Right correction. Under current business, item three, it's Dan Wood, not Dan Young.
I'll update the minutes.
Okay, with that correction, I would like to move approval.
Okay.
Seven.
Great. Raise your hand to vote if you vote yes.
Yes.
Okay, and we have a Library IQ presentation.
Yes, Lauren is on the phone, right? So Lauren Lee is, well, she'll introduce herself, but she's going to give us an overview of Library IQ, and I will flip us through the slides and try to stay on track here.
Thank you for inviting me this afternoon. Sorry that I can't be there in person. I'm Lauren Lee, Director of Collection Management for Library Systems and Services, which means that I oversee the physical and virtual collections for all of our libraries. Today, I'm going to give you an overview of the Library IQ platform and how we use that data to manage our collections. The collection management team selects new titles after profiling each library's individual needs. We then acquire all the materials, we make sure they're ready for the shelf, we collaborate with local library staff on materials budget allocations, on merchandising and marketing the collections, we pay all the collection-related bills, and we make sure that your patrons can find the items that they want in your catalog. We work with each library throughout their fiscal year to ensure that funds are spent wisely and well. We also guide the collections by using the data provided by the Library IQ platform, and we're going to look at some of that data today. Can everyone hear?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Yes, we can.
So what is Library IQ? In the broadest sense, it is a division of Library Systems and Services that provides services to libraries beyond our fully managed ones. We provide collection management services, strategic plans, facility optimization, technology management to public libraries that contract with us for those individual services. But we also use the phrase Library IQ to mean the analytics platform, which is a centralized dashboard of library statistics, and this is one of the menus with one section expanded Several years ago, we realized that there was no single platform where we could monitor all the aspects of library performance, so we created one. And it is now used not only by our libraries, but by a total of over 200 facilities across the country. Dara and her collection leads have access to this tool with all of its data. And most recently, on August 23rd, the collection management team met with the staff here to review all the statistics and make plans for the new fiscal year. One of the many benefits of this dashboard is that the data is updated every 24 hours automatically, most of it pulling directly from the Polaris Integrated Library System. One thing to mention about this for Escondido is since you've only been on Polaris for a little over two years, we don't necessarily have all the historical data. Some data came over from the Sierra system, but not everything. This actually works in your benefit in some ways when we look at your circulation over the past 24 months. So the brown line was the previous 12 months, and the blue line is the current 12 months. Your first measure was during the pandemic, so you started with some, well, you didn't start that way, but by April of 2020, your statistics were dropping, as were the statistics at all libraries around
Jennifer Gilchop.
But then you came back fairly quickly, and it's nice to see that since March of this year, you've stayed well above what was happening with your circulation last year. On this slide, which we actually finished yesterday, you were showing a 36.8% growth in circulation. I checked it this morning, and you had rounded up and hit 37%, so you're definitely going in the right direction. And actually did better than quite a few libraries during those most severe pandemic months. Some libraries had circulation drops of 50% or more, but you never hit the actual bottom line, and you came back up fairly quickly. We can see a lot of different data quickly and easily. When I was checking this morning, I looked to see how many items checked out yesterday, 1,266. I could even download that list of titles if I wanted to. How many items circulated in the last year? Well, on this chart, you probably can't read the fine print, but it said 402,506. Well, add in the additional numbers, and now you've gone over 406,000 items for the previous 12 months. So it's absolutely up-to-date information. Which collections have the highest usage? That's always very interesting, and we're going to take a look at that more closely in a few minutes. But all of this data that we have access to helps us maintain the collections through purchasing the proper materials, the materials that are circulated, circulating, and through weeding the materials that are not moving. And both of those things can be guided through data on this platform. And it all starts with a plan, a Library IQ action plan. And each library can have up to five plans, one for children's print and audio, one for adult print and audio, one for young adult or teen print and audio, and then movies and music is a category that is separate from the audiences. Then there's an overall plan to take in the entire collection. With children's collections, they might be called children's or juvenile; with teens, they might be called young adults or teens, but they mean the same thing. So after you see the lines for circulation, then if you look below that in the boxes, you see the key performance indicators or KPIs. And I'm going to start with the one on the right, the circulation change, where you see that nice green arrow going up. This is the change in circulation for this current year from the previous year. So that 36 or 37% is very good. If we move over to the left side of that chart, we see a figure for the percent of the collection that hasn't circulated in over three years. So these are the shelf sitters, and they're things that we might want to look at in terms of potential weeding candidates. The debt on arrival, or the DOA, measures the percent of new books that did not find a reader in their first year at the library. So maybe they weren't the best choices, and we need to look at what they were. So with each of these KPIs, we can click in and get the title data behind the statistic. Then we have relative use and turnover rate, both of which deal with the size of the collection and the circulation numbers for that collection. So relative use is the balance between the collection size and the circulation. You're at one for the overall collection, which is ideal. That's what everybody strives for, for relative use. What that means is if, let's just say, the picture books are 10% of your total collection, and they're 10% of your total circulation, then they are balanced. If the collection was larger than the circulation, the collection might be too big and could perhaps be reduced. If the collection is smaller than the rate of circulation, then you might want to increase. The more you buy in a popular area, you can assume the more will circulate. And then finally, there's the turnover rate, which is the average number of circulations per item per year. Now, you're sitting at 3.04 right now, and if you look underneath, it was just 2.1 at this time last year, 2.01. Before the pandemic, the average turnover rate for print in all U.S. public libraries was three. So what this tells me is you're back to a pre-pandemic turnover rate, which is good. And we'll talk a little bit more about that. So you go through your current metrics, this line of KPIs, and then you set targets for how you'd like to improve. So maybe we could get the no-circ down to 6% and the debt on arrival down to 10%. We want to keep relative use the same. Maybe we want to inch up that turnover rate to 3.5. And then in terms of circulation, you can set the target, but at this point, I think we should be happy with any gains that we see, and you're clearly moving in that direction now.
Lauren, can you hear me?
Yes.
I think there's a couple questions about this particular slide and the key performance indicators. Is it all right if we answer those before moving on?
Sure.
Lauren, thank you so much. This is Carolyn Clemens. I'm one of the trustees and the president of the board. I have a quick question about who determines the KPIs and who sets the thresholds.
The targets are the things that are set, and that is typically by discussion between the local library staff and the collection management team. The only thing where I, you know, where I was talking about the relative use, you want a one, that's just a professional library standard. And then the turnover rate is, we watch what's happening in libraries around the country, and that's why I know that the turnover rate had been at three, and then it dropped. Some libraries had drops in circulation of over 50% during the pandemic, and so the other statistics worsened as a result of that. But we look at where you are, and these are pure numbers from the statistics that come over from Polaris. The formulas are built into these reports. We see, I mean, it's just coincidence that the no-circ in three years and the debt on arrival are both 13.5. They will go up and down literally every day as the collections move, but we would just set targets that would be somewhat aspirational. We want everything to get better, but not impossible. And so we discuss those things and say, well, let's brie on these numbers. So ultimately, it's local staff, but collection management is working with lots of libraries and having these discussions, and so I could share information about what some of the other libraries are doing, or what I'm reading in the literature, and then we set those Does that answer the question?
Yes, I believe it does. Thank you. I think we have some more questions.
Hi, Lauren. This is John Schwab. On the previous slide where you've got all the collection by codes Dewey, what is BISAC? I'm not familiar with that.
Ah, okay. It's called BISAC, and it is the retail scheme for subject headings. So if you go in a bookstore, every book can have up to three BISAC subjects on it, and the bookstores tend to use that to arrange their stock.
Okay, thank you.
Libraries have done that, but we use Dewey and fiction by author. But it's interesting because we do have that data on the titles, and I'm going to give you another example in a minute of looking at the collection by the BISAC heading. But it's a retail subject heading.
Okay, thank you. One more question. The slide, looking with the KPIs, is relative use what I saw in a webinar, Library IQ webinar about two and a half years ago? Is that the relative use and the way you calculate it?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. I understand it, so two years in a row, we're exactly 1.0?
Yes. Yes, and that is overall.
Okay, so it's overall, but in looking at how relative use, if you look at it by collection code, this could also indicate that on some codes, we, what was the old thing on an average temperature? You've got your head in the oven and your feet in the freezer? You know, wouldn't it be more useful if we could see some detail by some of the major codes?
Yeah, and that is one of the reports. I didn't put it on a slide for you, but you can go in by collection code and get all of these KPIs code by code. So we could see, I mean, one thing typically you'll see for DVDs is that the turnover rate is higher because the loading period might be shorter or was shorter up until September 1st in your case. So a lot of times DVDs will have a very different turnover rate from a print collection. Another collection that tends to have a very high turnover rate
Children's.
are the readers and the children's department, because they're short, they check out a lot of them at the same time. More per, more per book bag than fiction novels, for instance. So yes, it definitely varies by the type of material. And if you'd like to see that report, we could produce and send that to you.
Yes, I would. Thank you.
Okay, that was our
Anything else?
No, that was the extent for this slide. Thank you so much.
So now we're on slide eight.
Okay, let me get on slide eight. So the targets that you set then lead to action steps. How do we get to those targets we set? What can we do either the same or differently to keep moving in the right direction? A typical plan will address these four areas: should we make adjustments in selection, in the physical collection, in merchandising it, or in marketing it outside the library? Every year, the collection management team and the local staff get together and talk about these action steps. We set the steps that go for each of the five plans, we archive those, and then we revisit them together several times throughout the year. This is the most recent team collection action plan, although it is still in draft format. We have not finalized the five plans quite yet. But the discussion was that we should continue the current pattern of selection with plenty of communication between the library staff that deals with this collection and the collection management team. We made a note that the teams still seem to prefer print, but that we wanted to spend at least $1,000 on e-materials that are aimed at that audience. There was not much to do with the physical appearance because it has recently been weeded, the fiction and the graphic novels, so just keep an eye on it, but no major efforts needed there. So let's put some time into merchandising, to creating more displays and rotating displays, using any space at the end of shelves, using easels to put out an attractive cover of a book that may not have circed lately. We want to update all of our topical book lists, and then we want to take a special look at the team nonfiction, which is a very small collection, but we want to make sure that we're keeping it up-to-date and appealing. And then for marketing, we talked about doing some social media posts that tie into all these displays so that our followers are tempted to come into the library to literally check out some materials. So this is just an example of the kinds of things we talk about to improve circulation, turnover, relative use, to limit the number of items that are sitting on the shelf and So now, if you're on slide nine
Yes.
Don't try to read all of these because it's tiny print, but these show pie charts that really help me get a feel for the way the collection proportions compare to the collection circulation. So I always actually start with these charts and take a look at them, and then I move on to more specifics. But I took the top five and put them, you know, in bigger words so we could more easily compare the largest collections to the collections with the highest circulation. So adult nonfiction is the largest collection, which was pretty common in public libraries for decades. But it's number five in circulation, so that might be a little bit unbalanced. If we looked at that relative use, it might not be the best. So we could consider doing a little bit more reading there. Adult fiction is also a large collection, and it doesn't appear in the top five. However, DVD fiction was the third-largest collection, and it moved straight to the top of highest circulation. So there, my thought would be residents of Escondido have not tired of physical DVDs yet. You know, one day they might, but they're still really moving at the library, so we need to continue to support that. Then ebooks, which were not in either the top five or the top 10, is the second-highest circulating collection code, and that's very good. And it means that, you know, we need to keep those collections constantly refreshed so that, you know, those users will continue to check out materials. So over the last couple of years, we have, I think Escondido has had overdrive in place for ebooks and e-audio for quite a while, but then we added cloud library. And part of the reason for that was to be able to take advantage of a resource-sharing group called the California Cloud Link. So your patrons can borrow any e-items that are owned by the other Cloud Link members so that they have access to more than just the titles that you've bought licenses for. So you've got two very good sources for ebooks and e-audio books, then you have some streaming sources that operate on a slightly different model, but it's really clear that digital resources are important to your public. Then the children's come in there with picture books. Everybody loves children's picture books, so those are circulating in the third place. We didn't see them in the top five, but I think I do remember they were in the top 10. I might say, oh, let's buy some more, but we also have to consider the space and the budget. So there are always caveats like that. We could use more based on these statistics, but do we have the space to put it? Do we have the money to buy it? So constantly juggling the data with the day-to-day reality. So in addition to looking at this by collection code, you can also look at it by Dewey and by those BISAC subject categories.
Lauren?
So I did that.
Sorry. Before we move on, could we just go back to the pie chart real quick? I think we need to know which is which. So is the left-handed pie chart the highest collection, or is it the highest?
That's the collection.
Okay, so the collection's on the left.
The upper left is the collection.
Okay.
The lower right is the circulation.
Okay, thank you.
And I apologize for that. I think I lost a heading somewhere along the way.
Okay, thank you so much.
And when I send you the report by collection code, you'll be able to see this information too.
Okay, great. Thanks. We can go back to your weeding slide.
In a chart form. Okay, so what I was just going to say about this before we leave it is when I looked at circulation by Dewey, you can go to the Dewey hundreds, or the Dewey tens, or the single digits. The single most popular Dewey number was 641, which is where all the cookbooks are, right? So that was the top circulating Dewey number. And then when I looked at the BISAC subject categories, which tend to be used more for fiction than for nonfiction, although they apply to both, but the top genre there was suspense fiction. So in the tool, you can choose any of these ways to drill down into these numbers. So the weeding tool, in conjunction with reports that we can pull from Polaris and with an app we've been working on, we've really been streamlining the process to do inventory and weeding in the same process, to do both. But just to show you how we can set criteria, I did a search for adult nonfiction, and I wanted to know what had not circulated in three years. So matching that KPI that said there were titles that hadn't circulated. I could have changed it to 48 months. I could have added in a pub date, like published prior to 2015. I could do a lot of things with these criteria, but the first thing it does is give me an immediate count of the numbers. So I see that there are 1,445 items that haven't circulated. And when I'm in the tool on the screen below, you start seeing the list of titles. And I see the percentage of nonfiction, which is 9.9, and I see the total collection, the percent of the total collection. So this 1,445 is 1.4% of the total physical collection. But I think, okay, this is not bad. I'm going to look at this report and see what I think about the titles. And I went into a spreadsheet, and then I picked a few out just to use as examples. And I went into a spreadsheet, and then I picked a few out just to use as examples. So these are suggestions of titles we might weed, based at this point only on the fact that they have not circulated in three years. So the first one I see is A Chilton's Manual from 1983. And I happen to know, because Dara told me, that Escondido has Cruising Grand and a high interest in classic cars, and that there are quite a few people that come into the car repair section and find one of these older books for a car they're working on, and they'll take it to the copy machine and copy the pages they need. So they won't necessarily check it out, but that this collection of older car manuals is still getting used. So then I would say, okay, I won't weed A Mission Diagnosis from 1983. Then I see a couple of titles that are of fairly local interest. I'm not sure exactly where Alpine is, but it does say Southern California. I know you're close enough to San Diego, that you probably share the same trees. So I think, well, this is local information. I wouldn't weed that, or I would check to make sure that their copy is in the Pioneer Room. And then I get to two that are a little more technical, The Septic Systems Handbook from 1991 and A Study Guide for HVAC Licensing, which is actually the newest of all these books. It's only 14 years old, but I don't think I'd want somebody to study for their license based on information that was 14 years old. So out of these five titles, I would probably end up saying, well, I'm going to try to replace these two. I'm going to withdraw The Septic Systems and HVAC, and I'm going to look for newer copies unless I have them already. So I would also check the current collection. But the idea is that you start with the data of the age and the lack of circ, but then you apply judgment based on local practice and local needs. Library IQ gives us the data, but it doesn't necessarily control the outcome because professional librarians continue to review every item that is suggested for weeding consideration. And that's the way to ensure that we're making the right decisions for the specific collection. So even if I'd gone to the shelves and pulled these books, then the staff member would have looked at them and, you know, perhaps made slightly different decisions, but I think overall, we would have come to the same conclusions. So we can't go through every page of this. There are just so many features, but I wanted to show you that there are sections where you can get into more detailed circulation analysis. There are connections to acquisitions and cataloging, where you can check your budget without logging into Polaris. You can see the titles that have been ordered for you, that are currently on order for But there are also some other fun things. There are some selection sections, quick ways to compare your collection to various types of recommended lists. There's one that shows the titles that are trending up in circulation amongst all the Library IQ libraries. There are bestseller lists, including Amazon and Library Journal. There are recommended lists of forthcoming titles from our main print vendor. But at the bottom of the selection section, you can actually see the turnover rates for authors and series. And this is very, this is very cool. So we know James Patterson is popular, and we said that the standard turnover rate for print is three, but James Patterson himself has almost five as a turnover rate. And Mary Pope Osborne, who writes children's series, has a turnover rate of 10. So we see all the top contributors, the people at the top of this list, and we say, we've got to keep up with every new thing they come out with. We've got to have enough copies. We've got to replace things that get worn. So now, if we look at the series, there's a graphic novel series that has the highest turnover rate, 24.6. But look at all these readers in the middle. You know, I mentioned that readers had very high turnover rates. Lego Star Wars and Pete the Cat, they're over 20. And then we have quite a few below that with a turnover rate of 19. So with all of these, particularly in children, we've got to make sure that we're replacing things that do just plain wear out from all the use, and that we're keeping up with those And it's really not just about collections, even though that is certainly my specialty, but we have a lot going on with the development for Library IQ. We're starting to add data that's above and beyond the physical collection. There is a patron section now that shows the percent of the service area that has library cards. There's a map of users and their activity level placed over the census tracts. We're very mindful of the need for privacy and confidentiality, so names and addresses do not come over into this data, into Library IQ. There's no way to find out who's checking out what, so there's no worries there. But the information can help inform the staff, perhaps about a neighborhood where the usage is low, and there could be some outreach. Information about the community that can help guide new users to your virtual or your physical doors. There's a library metrics section that is bringing over all of those service statistics from Counting Opinions so that we can view it in the same spot, as I said earlier. And this is a very exciting partnership for us, to combine data on visits and programs and program attendance with all of these collection statistics. The next section that's planned is a very much expanded electronic resource data section. We saw the eBooks and e-audio showing up from Overdrive Libby and from Cloud Library, but we'll be able to bring in all the statistics from Hoopla and Slipster and Comics Plus. We're hoping to bring over the usage information from the various databases. So this will all be coming into one place from, not from, all coming over from Polaris, like the physical collection, but coming over from all these individual vendors and pulling it together for our review. And then finally, we're also partnering with Claritas Market Segments to get data. You know, these are those groups that have the clever names like Pools and Patios, or Tool Belt Traditionalists, or Ittiness. So we will be able to bring in data about the service area and the predominant segments and their consumer behavior, and make some connections of what they might expect from library services. So Library IQ is a very dynamic tool. I mean, it does still have that relative use that you looked at two years ago, but we're always adding new features. We're consistently updating it, developing more, improving what we can learn about our library collections and services. So I hope you enjoyed this walkthrough and some of your own statistics. We are very proud of this tool. It's fast, it's comprehensive, it has unique features. There's nothing in the marketplace that brings all of these performance measures together. And we will use it to its full extent to help the Escondido collections continue to prosper. So thank you for your attention, and I'll be happy to answer any other questions that you have. And if there's anything else you want me to put on my to-do list in terms of providing data, I'll be happy to do that.
Lauren, thank you so much for the presentation. It was, I think, for me, extremely helpful. I know that John has one more question, so I'll turn it over to him.
Lauren, thank you for your presentation. I wanted to know if you could maybe elaborate a little bit on Counting Opinions.
I actually might ask Jennifer or Dara to talk about that. All I know is that it's the statistics on the services you provide that probably go into some of your monthly and annual reports, but it's coming through a separate platform, and now we're bringing all of that data into Library IQ, where I think it will be a little bit more usable.
Sounds like-
I have not worked with it yet.
Okay, that sounds like maybe something for a future board meeting presentation.
Well, when you, each year when we submit our stats to the state of California, they use Counting Opinions. That's the database. So this now, Library IQ, is going to be set up to pull from that, like it pulls from Polaris, to help us process data, all in one spot.
Okay. Just wanted-
This is Jennifer Geltrop. I just want to clarify a couple of things. So Counting Opinions is the name of the company that we have the software solution installed in all of our libraries, that they're able to capture all of their monthly statistics into. And then 25 states across the country and the Institute of Museum and Library Services also use Counting Opinion. So in the state of California, what that means is that when it's time to do the annual report, there's an easy upload into the annual data collection and a standardization around what libraries collect, et cetera. And then the state of California is able to upload that nationally into the IMLAS database. And this is where we get a lot of those peer comparison and other sources of data that I know John, we've looked at, you know, over the years, and is very helpful in equalizing statistics across libraries across the country. So we are partnering with Counting Opinions to bring this data into Library IQ. And as Lauren said, there is no other platform that libraries use that combine patron data and bibliopic data, e-statistics, all in one place. So, you know, as far as showing a demonstration of Counting Opinions, it would be much duller than what you've seen today because it's basically a data collection bucket, all these buckets of data on the types of information that libraries need to collect on e-statistics.
Okay, thank you. I've been a fan of this process LSNS has of having a centralized collection management team that pretty much brings a lot of resources that a small library like ourselves doesn't have, and frees up our staff to focus on what they need to focus on and have the support and the information flow from the mothership, so to speak. So this is great and glad to learn more about it. Thank you.
Virginia, did you have anything?
Thank you for that confidence.
I have two small questions, just so that I understand the process. For the Library IQ system, is that something that you guys gather data from the mothership, as John said, or do you guys have access to pull reports as needed when you need
This is Jennifer. So the Polaris system that LSNS administers for all of the libraries is where the data is pulling into IQ. And that's done on a regular basis. In some cases, that's nightly, in other cases, it's weekly, so that the data is always fresh and exact as we're looking at it.
Okay, great. Thank you for explaining that to me. Also, a few months ago, John and I sat down with Dara, Katie, and Aspen Hill, who is the Director of Operations for our local library, and she explained the weeding process to us. How is that different from what we learned today from the Library IQ? Does Aspen use a completely different reporting process, or she gets the reports from this? Okay, thank you. That's all. Thank you. Go ahead, Dara.
So right now, she's also using Simply Reports to complement Library IQ because our time's been somewhat limited on Library IQ. As time goes on, and there's more history for us in the system, because we started on Polaris in, well, late August of 2019, and then you combine that with COVID, Library IQ's not giving us all the information that it will be able to in even another year. So we did use Simply Reports as well.
Thank you.
Ron?
This makes me feel a lot better. I was a little concerned when we were under fire for the weeding process, which we've probably been under fire for two or three times, but I just really like this program because it will allow us to replace the weeding articles that are dismissed with a very scientific way to meet the needs of our public. So I really feel more comfortable after I've seen this presentation, and I thank you for bringing it to us.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm going to mimic exactly what Ron said. I think that this tool is exactly what we've been looking for for the last couple of years in order to establish metrics of success. I think our key performance indicators is data that we can stand by to say that, you know, not only is LSNS bringing us this tool and it's working well, but we're actually performing extremely well, and we can prove it in an objective way. So I think that this is awesome. I'm also extremely looking forward to overlaying or integrating census data, I think that's what Lauren said, into the tool, which will help us determine where our areas of underservice are. I think that there's been a perception amongst the community that maybe we aren't serving everyone, so that will just offer us another data point to show who we are serving and how we're bringing value to our community. So thank you so much to everyone.
I'd like to say one more thing.
Okay.
I think, Dara, you and Katie should be very proud of yourself. 36% circulation in these times is unbelievable, and I really applaud you for that.
I agree. Thank you. They both do a great job.
Thank you. Thank you for doing this today, Lauren. It was very helpful. And just so you know, since you couldn't see, we stayed succinct, staying on the right slide, so we did a great job.
Okay. Thank you. And you can let me know if there's anything else you'd like to get from me. I'll sign off now.
Thanks so much, Lauren. Okay, moving on to the blocked account assistance. John, did you want to speak to that?
Yeah, I'm having some difficulty in getting this off dead center, just so we can get some reviews and some active discussion going on it. There isn't a whole lot of detailed data, and so when I talk to people about it, I'm getting both literal and figurative crossing of the arms, saying, you know, it's too big, it costs too much, and I don't want any part of it. it costs too much, and I don't want any part of it. So I can't get the data, as we've discussed before. It's not in Polaris, and I don't think it was in Sierra either. But I'm going to approach it from a different matter, and we're going to, I'm going to filter it down to the population that I think could potentially need assistance. And keep going. But right now, I've got really nothing to report, nothing positive.
Can I ask a question? As far as resistance and crossed arms, who are you talking to? Library staff?
No, no, I'm not talking to library staff. I'll just leave it at that. People that are normally very receptive to helping out, and they can't see, they see the forest, and I'm trying to get them to look at a tree.
Okay.
And I've got to approach it in a different manner and let them know what target audience I'm after. You know, I'm focused on adolescents or kids 18 to 21 in college that have some serious challenges at home and might be good candidates for assistance, not just somebody who's 25 and got the card blocked, you know. They could just go out to dinner once less a month and pay for it. That's not the people I'm after.
Any questions? No? Okay. Next, Dara, would you like to give your director's report?
So on Wednesday, September 1st, we officially stopped charging overdue fines and changed all items to a 21-day checkout to make our library more accessible and easier to use. The Friends of the Library shop is now open to four on Wednesdays, Thursdays, and Fridays, which is great because there was a lot of demand for those extended hours. In August, our Youth Services Department began reintroducing in-person programs. They offered two sessions of all-inclusive art club, which is an all-ages, all-abilities programs that welcomes families back into the library with stories and hand-on sensory learning projects. There were 43 people in attendance, and that's between the two programs, the other program being our PJ Storytime, which, these are both family programs, and the PJ Storytime program is an evening program. So we were very excited for that because we didn't have the rush to try and get it between 6:30 and have everybody out by 7:00. So we now have, you know, a later 7 o'clock program that wraps up in time for people to leave at 8:00. So we'll see how that goes. But we had a lot of rave reviews about people being happy to be back in the building. On August 16th, we have Maureen Hogan join our team. She's our new Youth Services Librarian One. Maureen is originally from Santa Barbara, but recently graduated from the University of Washington in Seattle with her Master's in Library and Information Science. On Tuesday, September 7th, we're going to welcome, well, actually, we've already welcomed Stephanie Martinez as our Library Associate in Teen Services. Stephanie has a background working with local teens in the Latino community in San Marcos, and will use her expertise to reach out to Escondido teens. Today, we welcomed Ashley Hayes as our new Library Associate in Customer Service and the Pioneer Room. Ashley has been a Pioneer Room volunteer for many years and has just started attending San Jose State University for her Master's in Library and Information Science. So next week, we will be interviewing for Librarians Ones and Library Assistance for our Adult Services Department. Once all those folks are in the building, we will officially be back to our full staff.
Questions?
No, but I really want to tell you how pleased I am about the people you have hired who have the same degrees or higher degrees, because when we had the big controversy about going to LSNS, this was one of the biggest issues. Oh, they're going to dismiss all the people with Master's degrees, and we're going to have one librarian with Master's degrees and the rest of the people with no library science degrees. And so every time you hire someone, I register what is their degree. And you and LSNS should be complimented because we have kept up at least, in fact, we may be ahead of where we were when we changed over. So that's very critical to me, and I thank you for it.
Dara, I just had a quick question, only because I'm curious. I saw that an interior designer visited the library, so I was just wondering if you could report on that.
Yes, we had an interior designer visit the library on August 30th. She's going to be putting together some possibilities. I think we're going to be in that building for quite a bit longer. Even if we were to expand in the future, we still have several years ahead, and it would be lovely to get the library to be a little more contemporary and fit to the needs of the community. And so she will be coming up with kind of a dream scenario, and then also some possibilities of phasing the plan to, over the course of a few steps, renovate the first floor. So that would be shorter shelving, hopefully some study cubicles or workspaces. I say maker space, not knowing exactly what task would fill that area. So there's all kinds of possibilities, and so she's going to come up with something for us. And we do know that there's going to be grants coming through the state at some point for facilities, so we might have a chance to get grants for possibilities of matching grants that we can potentially do a full renovation or at least a partial. So we'll look forward to seeing those plans back from her and seeing what that looks like and what we need to aim for.
So, Dara, will the strategic plan, survey, or focus groups be able to influence at all that?
I think it will most likely be focus groups.
Okay.
It's so tough with that because the survey has to be, as you know, and I've experienced in coming up with the questions, that it's somewhat succinct, and I don't want to say, it stays within parameters.
Right.
So we can't really think outside of the box taking the survey, whereas the focus groups, I'm hoping, will allow for that and give people a chance to contribute what they think the community needs or what their needs are.
But you are planning to have the focus groups, you know, say they want a virtual reality studio or something? That would influence, like-
Yeah.
-the iterative plan?
Absolutely.
Oh, good, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Have you had any comments yet from the patrons on fees going away?
Not fees, no.
No, okay. Have you ever had others?
No, so far, because we're, you know, we have our ears all set for certain things we're listening for right now with the focus, knowing January's not as far away as it sounds. We're trying to pay attention to how, what do people think of the expanded hours? And so far, since we've only had our youth services programs, we're getting a lot of positive feedback from working parents that appreciate the evening story time.
Great.
But that's our, that anecdotal information that we'll include. But we haven't heard anything about the fees at this point. Have you? Has anybody responded to newsletters?
So far, I've had one comment. It was definitely very supportive. I had a patron email on our notices and ask about a book that was on hold for someone that was not able to be renewed for her, and I explained, like, she just didn't understand, and I said, you know, it's on hold, so it can't renew. She said, well, I appreciate that year of gone fine free, so I won't have overdue fees, but I'll bring it back in today. But it still would have been like two days late at that time. So that's the only comment I have received so far.
Thank you.
John?
No?
Okay, great. Why don't we go into our informal trustee reports then? Virginia, would you like to start?
I have just a small report. I really appreciate the automatic renewal because I totally needed it this last month. And it was a good reminder of, yes, I got to finish that book, and then, yes, I have to hurry up and turn it in and get through the others. So I really appreciated that change in the update. Thank you.
Well, this morning, I attended the Friends of the Library Board Meeting. This is a very energetic group. If you haven't had a chance to go, they're very energetic, and they are so enthusiastic about our library that it makes you feel very good to see them. They also, they approved a lot of little projects, book clubs and this, and they give funds that allow these to occur. And they're very serious about, it's not just rubber stamping, they listen to what people, staff members, say about the description of what's going to go on. And so they do, they do an awful lot of good, and I know that when they go out into the community, they publicize our library in a positive way, like probably we could never buy. But if you haven't had a chance to go there, it does give you a lot of positive thoughts when you see these people in action. They have a lot of fun, too. It's not the most formal meeting I've ever attended, but they really do a good job, and I think we should be very appreciative of the value they bring to our library and the community.
Great. John, do you have anything?
I'm sorry, but this past several weeks have had some issues physically, so I haven't been able to get out and about, so that's, I really don't have anything to add for this month.
Okay, thank you.
So I recently downloaded and started using Libby, the Libby app, which I've listened to one e-audio book, and then I've read three fiction books, and it works really well, ties to my Kindle, and I don't have to worry about, like, clicking return or anything. It just pulls it right from my Kindle. I do have a question about it, though. It's still labeled like the Sierra Collective in there. Do you know why that is?
So time-wise, I don't know exactly what year, but I believe it was sometime around 2007, 2008. So our library's part of the CERA Consortium. That's a consortium of Southern California libraries. And we, as a consortium at the time, decided to, we didn't have enough resources individually, so we decided as a group to purchase a subscription to Libby, or Overdrive at the time. And so we still have that consortium account, and anyone who has a library card for any of the member consortium libraries have access to the consortium titles that are purchased by one of the consortium, like, actual people who work for the consortium. But also, many of us, many libraries have now added their own individual collections. So we actually have two collections. We have the CERA Collection, and we also have the Escondido's Advantage Collection. So if you sign up as an Escondido card, you're going to see more titles than just the CERA Collection. And then we're also able to then share those titles after a certain period of time with other consortium libraries. So it's really cool. So that's why, it's because we purchased it initially as a consortium, and so-
Okay.
-that's why you see it.
I guess I was thinking of Sierra, which was our old system, which we transitioned to Polaris, right? So that's, it's totally separate.
Yeah, it's very confusing because they're one letter different.
Yeah.
When we're working on Sierra and we have the CERA Cooperative, like, it happened all the time. It's very confusing. They're not at all related. It's just a similar word.
Okay, great. And I used your how-to guide that was on the website, so it was great.
Did you use the video?
No.
You just used the, like, the step-by-step?
Uh-huh. Yeah. I did want to let the other board members know. We, in the next Strategic Planning Committee meeting, we're going to be coming up with a list of all of the events that we need to attend or that we could attend in order to market the new survey for the strategic plan. So I'll share that with you, but it might be good if we could share that also with the Friends of the Library or the library volunteers to see if they'd be willing to attend some of those and help spread the survey as well. So, Zach, maybe I'll send that to you?
Definitely.
Okay, great, great. Okay. Does anyone have anything else?
I think-
Oh, sorry.
Excuse me, Carolyn. I know the mayor is very busy, but I wanted to thank Mr. Mayor for coming to our meeting. We really appreciate your support. Thank you very much.
Would you like to say anything, Mr. Mayor? Okay. Dara, did you have anything else?
I just wanted to let you know, we were talking about the Strategic Planning Committee with the Friends today, so I think we'll have at least a handful, I'm pretty sure at least four of them were pretty interested in sitting in on a focus group.
Okay, great, wonderful. Well, with that, I will conclude the September meeting of the Escondido Library Board of Trustees.